Um, I don't believe there are, there is anything new to report other than we did have a policy subcommittee meeting earlier this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Horgan wants to give a brief update on that?
Sure. So we're looking at a fund crowdfunding fundraising policy. I'm looking into that like donors choose or school choice. That's one policy that we're looking into. And the other one was updating the grade and report cards policy. But I don't believe that's going to be on the docket tonight to vote on and approve. That will be at the next meeting.
Right.
But just as the two policies we had today.
It's a, it's a, it's a very lean. There's really one reason why we're convening tonight and that's the.
The mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just had one thing that from last meeting, uh, the enrollment, I'd just like to give a little update.
Please go ahead. Yep.
Enrollment, uh, reported that the October first. Uh, Sims report has been submitted. Our current enrollment is fifty-one eleven. We are a hundred and ninety students less than FY twenty. There are seven grade levels that have had a decrease. The largest was in A in kindergarten. Um, we are over a hundred less than we had last year. Um, our Monty Tech is about same at about seventy to eight. We still enrolling students every day. And that's kind of where we are. Any questions? Have either on could answer any.
Any questions? Seeing none. Mr. Superintendent, should we start with an update from, uh, Health Director Steve Curry?
Yeah, I, uh, maybe if I can, uh,
Go ahead.
Give my standard update which incorporates not only the latest, uh, figures from, uh, the local board of health, but the data that was just released by the Mass Department of Public Health, uh, as of, uh, about five o'clock this evening. So, um, Mr. Glennie, if I can share my screen?
You should be able to.
Okay, thanks Nate. Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, you know, as we are or continue into nine months of, uh, dealing with the COVID situation in our community and across the state. Um, tonight I wanted to try to provide some context as to the, uh, action item that's, uh, on your agenda tonight regarding the, uh, return to the hybrid model. Um, so without further ado. On a weekly or periodic basis, uh, Florida Health Director Steve Curry, uh, updates the number of active cases in Fitchburg, uh, by way of social media. And, um, I've been presenting this chart now for some time as the others that I'll be, uh, that are following this. Um, and as of, uh, yesterday, I think we were over three hundred fifty active cases in Fitchburg. And that case number has increased, uh, by about eighty, um, individuals since, uh, December ninth. Here's the latest, uh, information, uh, that was just released by the Mass Department of, uh, Public Health. Um, and Fitchburg on a percent positivity for people testing within the last fourteen days is at ten, uh, point three five percent. Um, the, uh, just in point of comparison, um, the community next door to us, our, our twin city is at eleven point six seven percent. So over the last few months, I've been presenting the following two slides, uh, the average daily incidence rate, uh, trend. Um, again, it reached a, um, a high of, uh, eighty-one point one, uh, cases per one hundred thousand, uh, residents. And looking at the total amount of tests performed, uh, for the first time over the last four months. Uh, there were, um, on a two-week basis, over five thousand tests were performed, nearly fifty-two hundred tests. Um, of those about ten point three five percent of those tests, uh, came back positive. So, um, before I go on with, um, where, where the, uh, that where public education fits in on the, um, vaccination timeline, uh, I guess I'll just, uh, offer Mr. Curry an opportunity to expand or elaborate or provide additional context in as to what I just presented.
Sure. Good evening, folks. Uh, could you go to the next slide? So we have a vaccine, as everybody knows. Um, it looks like phase one is directed at our healthcare facilities and our nursing homes and long-term care facilities. Doesn't look like we're going to see, uh, general public clinics and probably until April. Uh, I would think that, uh, schools, uh, would be in the phase two range. I think that's like the February to April range. We're, we're looking at many options to do things regionally, whether that flies with DPH. Um, uh, my, my goal is to basically try to make this a little bit quicker, quicker. Uh, whether I succeeded at that or not is, uh, sort of a crap shoot. Uh, but I'm, I'm, I'm trying to look at something regionally, uh, that maybe we could team up with the, uh, our sister city and, uh, maybe even possibly Gardner and a few other smaller communities to do something like I mentioned a little quicker, but that's very preliminary at, 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 at present. It doesn't look like general public is going to see any back vaccine until April and then school children maybe a month earlier than that, month or two earlier. If I may comment before we get off the subject, I know, uh, committee member Reynolds asked me, on a weekly basis, or I'm not, I'm sorry, not weekly, but, uh, regular meetings on the breakdown of age groups. Um, and if, at this time, I'd like to do that if that's okay.
Thank you.
So at present, uh, yesterday, we're actually at three fifty, um, to, and the last day as of yesterday, we only only got sixteen cases. Uh, so we are at currently three twenty-six, um, active cases. Fifty-two of those cases are school aged. So fifty-two out of three hundred and twenty-six active cases are school age. And those in that breakdown, fifty-two is ages zero to five is sixteen. Six to ten is, uh, twelve individuals. Age eleven to fifteen is eleven. And then from sixteen, age sixteen to nineteen is thirteen. So it's pretty, uh, pretty even throughout those age groups, but as I stated, fifty-two out of three hundred and twenty-six active cases are school aged.
Thank you.
Mr. Curry, this is Jim Walsh. I have a question for you regarding the, the phase two. If you could go back to the previous slide.
All right.
Um, that, that second bullet where it says early education K through twelve. Are we talking about teachers and aides, not students? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that is teachers, uh, Jim, and I guess I'll just, uh, share with you what the commissioner has shared with, uh, superintendents that now, um, you know, the healthcare, uh, workers are being, uh, vaccinated. Uh, and I guess just today, the, uh, Moderna vaccine was just approved by the FDA. And, uh, according to the commissioner that, um, you know, the teachers, um, and teacher, people who work in public education, um, will be in this February to, uh, April timeframe, and I think they're pressing to, um, make sure that that happens in, in February, but don't hold me to that. Um, comment in that as, uh, time goes on, um, that there will be a tsunami of availability of, uh, the vaccine. Um, again, there's, there's very, there are no details as to how that will roll out. Um, you know, in phase two, uh, again, the phase one has just begun with healthcare workers in Massachusetts.
Thank you, superintendent. So this slide that we're looking at was put together before Moderna had received approval. Having a second vaccine, do you think the timelines might change a little bit or do we know yet what a second vaccine will do to distribution?
We, we don't know for sure. Again, uh, this, I think this, uh, slide captures the, um, I think assumption or plan that both the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines, uh, would receive FDA approval and, um, they had kind of, uh, incorporated the availability of those two vaccines um, into their phasing.
It's my understanding, if I may jump in, the Pfizer is, is approved by FDA, but Moderna is not at present, but it is shortly. And the Pfizer vaccine is, uh, not as user-friendly as the, uh, Moderna is. It's, uh, it's a five-day, uh, expiration as opposed to thirty days. Uh, so in the storage temperature is much more significant, up to seventy or eighty degrees Celsius below zero as the Moderna is a little bit, uh, much less. Um, so I believe that the, uh, Pfizer is, is going to be used more for healthcare hospitals and those facilities that have the, uh, the, uh, ability to, to keep temperatures and store the vaccine and, and distribute it.
Could I ask, um, Steve Curry a question? Hi, Steve. Hi, Steve. It's Jean. Um, but just today even, um, like still reading stories that are talking about, so it's December seventeenth and still reading stories about like, are we at a Thanksgiving bump, right? Like, and obviously all the numbers have increased since Thanksgiving, but it's, it, I guess my question is, it seems like it's taken a long time to know that, right? Like, um, and so what I want to know is, when do you think, like, by what date would we know? Like all the holidays, what the, um, increasing numbers would be? Um, so like if, I mean, I, I can only hope that people have read this and heard this and they're not going to be getting together at Christmas and, um, New Year's, but like if they are, right? Like New Year's, it feels like it'll, it could be potentially kind of long to know what the number is doing, right? Like, uh, that's, that's the piece that's hard for me because like we, I don't think we're leaving that ten percent area very soon. Um, and when do you think we might be?
So to answer that, and it's more of a guess on my part or hypothesis of some sort, but, uh, the Thanksgiving holiday, we really didn't see the huge spike that I or we all expected. Um, but I also know that it was very difficult to get a test and I've heard horror stories of folks waiting four and five hours uh, in line and just plain giving up or being rejected. I have seen spikes. We did have two, um, two test sites in that time period. I'm sorry, the fourth and the tenth of December. Uh, so I did see spikes right after that. Uh, so it's really hard to tell, um, if the holiday caused, because I don't think people are adequately, had an adequate chance to get a test. But the proposal to go to January eleventh, uh, that's out there, uh, for your, um, discussion right now, I think is a really good one, that it, it does allow ten days, uh, after the second holiday to see what happens to the numbers and hopefully things calm down after, uh, if people do, uh, gather at New Year's Eve, at least they'll start to see the numbers um, and, and get an accurate picture rather than starting right into school when, when you see the results of get that gathering. I know it really doesn't answer your question, but, uh,
I, I guess it does. I just, I guess I was surprised that we're still debating about measuring it by December seventeenth. I guess it just, it seems to move a lot slower statistically than I guess I would have thought. So, um, that's the thanks. Yeah. But I, it's good to hear that.
Yeah, I, it's a guess. I think we would have seen a Thanksgiving spike, but it's just if the testing wasn't available, which may have affected that.
I, I have a quick question, Steve, if I can. Um, just to follow up on that too, wouldn't, so it, it, it seems as though the incubation period for symptoms for COVID nineteen is like ten to fourteen days, correct? So it, for the bumps after the holidays, a lot of experts were saying you're going to start seeing those ten to fourteen days after the holidays. That's when people start to get symptoms and start to get tested. So that was kind of a, a simplified explanation of why the bump for Thanksgiving was late. But I've seen a lot of, and Scott Gottlieb, I think is his last name, the former FDA director was saying, um, that he thinks it's going to be a mid-January bump from, from Christmas and from New Year's naturally because it's, you know, the ten to fourteen day incubation period. So I, I do, I'm, I am kind of concerned that, you know, with school opening on the eleventh, that, that would potentially be, um, you know, when that bump is occurring. But, um, you know, that's something I guess we can talk about more and I'm sure flexibility is going to be whatever at a center point, especially now that we're moving it again. Um, so another question, Steve. If actually, if you want to comment on that, please.
Sure. The, uh, we've seen the average, uh, actually, uh, for somebody to show symptoms is, uh, around two to five days if they're going to show symptoms. I mean, there's always the chance that it takes, uh, thirteen, twelve, thirteen days. But there also is the ability now to test out of quarantine, um, which, which didn't exist a few weeks ago. So now on day eight of your quarantine, uh, you can be released if you have no symptoms and you test negative day five or after. So as long as there is an availability of a test, which, which is a huge concern on my part. Um, I, I, I think you'll start to see a little bit more compliance with quarantine and you, and secondly, I think, um, we'll identify those later, uh, cases that develop later after the two to five days, if that makes sense.
That does make sense and I, I appreciate you correcting that because I, I thought I read, maybe that was updated because I thought I read ten to fourteen before.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, there's, there's no correction here. There's, there's a whole bunch of theories. It's just, it's, it's a law of averages right now. The, 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 nobody's perfect here.
I, fair enough. But either way, I appreciate that. Another question I had really quickly for, when you were saying the school-aged children, is that high watermark for, for right now for school-aged cases in Fitchburg? Since the pandemic has started, are we at a high watermark for school-aged children?
Um, I think it, it's probably a little bit higher than, than normal. Yes. Um,
So, but not higher than norm, but like the highest it's been?
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't think it's the highest, highest it's been.
For school-aged children? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd have to go back on my records, take a look at it, um, what the percentages are. I, I should have figured that out. I can probably do that and, and send it to you folks later. Um,
Okay. I was just curious. I,
Yeah. Not a huge, uh, difference, however. It might be ten or so cases higher.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Hey, any additional questions for Mr. Curry before I proceed? Okay, hearing none, I'll continue. Um, you know, as was shown in the previous slide and, uh, as Mr. Curry was talking a little bit, um, and public education K twelve, uh, again, this is from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts plan that was released last week. There are about eight hundred eighteen thousand individuals, um, in this cohort, uh, along with, you know, grocery, food and agriculture, uh, public works and public health workers, um, that are expected to be, uh, you know, vaccinated sometime between, um, February and April. Again, we don't know if that's the beginning of February or the end of April. And, um, you know, as Mr. Curry mentioned, um, you know, the, I guess the differences between two of the, uh, vaccines that are, uh, one that, that have been either approved or in the process of being approved. So before, before we get to, I guess, to the action item, right? We just want to provide some additional context because there is, um, late-breaking, um, information from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And actually, the Board of Education voted on Tuesday that effective January nineteenth, um, school districts and schools using a hybrid learning model to provide at least thirty-five hours of combined in-person and remote synchronous learning over a ten-day school day period. And that's districts and schools in a fully remote model must provide synchronous instruction each day and at least forty hours of, uh, synchronous and instruction over a ten-day period. Uh, John, do you want to just add on to this before we?
Yeah, so, um, right now, um, in our current remote model, based on the new requirements that they, uh, just put out, in our current remote model, we do meet the forty-hour requirement over a ten-day period. However, if we look at our, uh, planned hybrid model for our schools, we do not meet, uh, the thirty-five hours of, uh, combined in-person and remote synchronous learning over a ten-day period. So I went through, um, and looked at the different models and right now in elementary for cohort A and B, um, we're about twenty hours, forty minutes. So we have about fourteen and a half, almost fifteen hours, uh, that we need to go back and look at. For elementary for cohort C, we're about an hour short. At the middle school, uh, we're an hour short for cohort C. And, um, for the high school, we need to go back, um, and kind of look at all the models at the high school, um, and look at their office hours, in addition to look at their blocks and the asynchronous Wednesdays. So, um, we are planning on meeting tomorrow at three o'clock with the FEA to actually discuss, um, the hybrid schedule, um, and how it relates to these new time requirements.
And I guess just, uh, I'd like to just share out some, uh, information, um, with the school committee and the community, um, as we plan to have students return, uh, really by s- school, uh, grade cohort, elementary, middle and high school, what the, uh, breakdown of, uh, students who will be attending in person or in, uh, remote based on, uh, you know, past surveys and, um, the most recent parental preferences. Uh, so Mr. Randa's going to, uh, you know, take the mic from here.
Uh, good evening. So this table represents our most recent, um, hybrid versus remote numbers for the district. Um, as you can see, uh, forty-seven percent or two thousand two hundred and seventy-three students have chosen hybrid, while fifty-three percent of our students or twenty-five, um, hundred and sixty have, uh, chosen remote. Next slide. Um, this is broken down by elementary schools. And what you're going to notice is as we, uh, as the grade level, um, goes higher, the higher the number of hybrid is. Um, so it seems like there's, there's a bit of a comfort level with older students um, than the younger, but forty-three percent of our elementary age students or eight hundred and seventy-five, um, have chosen to be hybrid and fifty-seven percent or one thousand ninety-eight have chose remote. Um, next slide. So this breaks it down by grade level. And if you look at this, you can see that the, the trends through the grade levels are, are rather close. Um, the only real difference is kindergarten, um, and really the only reason for that is enrollment is down. Um, I, you know, uh, they're taking a gap year or they're being red-shirted, right? Um, for next year. Uh, next slide. This is our middle school, uh, hybrid versus remote. We have forty-six uh, percent of our middle school students, as you notice, that's trending up, or seven hundred and students are choosing hybrid, while fifty-four percent or eight hundred and thirty-one students have chosen, uh, remote. Uh, next slide. And this is a breakdown by the grade level, um, and really no big changes here, no big surprises. Uh, they're, they're rather close. Any anomalies that you see is really because of the size of the grade level. Some grade levels are larger than others, but they're, they're pretty closely aligned. Uh, this is for Fitchburg High School, and as you can see, we're almost at fifty percent. Um, we have forty-eight percent of five hundred and eighty-seven students have chosen hybrid, while, uh, fifty-two percent of six hundred and thirty-one students are remote. Next slide. Yeah. And you can see there is, uh, a bit of disparity here and I think what we're seeing is the, um, juniors and seniors really want to get back, um, in that building, um, where the, uh, ninth and tenth graders, uh, there, there are more remote students. I think that that's just kind of some common sense, right? The, the, um, seniors, it's their last year. I'm sure that they want to, um, spend that with each other in school.
And so I, I guess, uh, as I try to wrap up, uh, with, uh, you know, what's now our standard public safety announcement. You know, it's important every time, uh, we present this and I share this and, uh, given where we're at as a, you know, community, as a state, as a country, wash hands, wear masks, socially distance, um, especially now over the holidays, uh, coming up, it's, um, it's more important than ever and can help us, uh, not only protect people's he- health, but also uh, help hasten back a, uh, quicker return to, uh, normality. So that's, um, that's the conclusion of, I'll, I'll say the slideshow and I guess, um, I'd just like to add, you know, some comments here that, um, you know, as, uh, Steve Curry mentioned, uh, and really we throughout this, you know, crisis, uh, I think we've all tried to be, uh, nimble and flexible and really consistently looking at not only the data that I shared with you tonight, but also the, the totality of all factors, uh, including what's, you know, the social, emotional and mental health of our student, also what's, what's happening with our families. Um, the impact that it has on our families and, uh, especially, you know, in light of, uh, the current economic conditions brought on by the, uh, the pandemic. So, um, you know, in, in summary, um, you know, as we just heard from Mr. Curry, uh, providing an additional week time will hopefully allow us to, uh, mitigate some risk of, uh, staff who may be, uh, feeling some symptoms that are consistent with COVID nineteen. And we can bring, um, you know, forty-something percent of our students in the buildings. Uh, I want to be clear that we will be continuing to offer remote learning. Uh, you know, as, uh, Mr. Thompson mentioned, uh, given the new, uh, requirements from the Board of Education on synchronous learning, um, we have to, uh, continue bargaining. Uh, that's something that we have done, uh, for a couple of rounds here in partnership with the FEA. And, um, you know, again, looking at all the factors at this time, um, we're recommending a one-week, um, postponement of the, uh, hybrid start and really one, another week's continuation of, uh, remote learning is what it boils down.
Are we moving on, Mr. Superintendent?
It's, the floor is yours, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So the action item on the table tonight, ladies and gentlemen, twenty-one dash thirty-five. Approved the superintendent's recommendation to continue remote learning through Friday, January eighth, twenty twenty-one and begin hybrid learning for all cohorts, A, B, C and D on Monday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
May I just say something here?
Go ahead.
Before we, uh, move, um, I've received, um, a call from a concerned parent and, um, he's nervous about all these, like, we're going to start then, oh, we're going to move it, we're going to, then we're going to start then and then move it. Um, if we move it this time, just consider, do we think there's sufficient time, or might we want to move it out longer now? Just a thought, that, that these, these, these stops and starts are making them nervous because they have to prepare for the children and the care, and that, it, it's upsetting to them, just a, just a thought.
I, Ms. Reynolds, I, I for one am, am, am experiencing data fatigue here. Moving a week, I'm, I'm voting in favor of that reluctantly, because I really believe we need to get these kids back in school. And I know some are going to, you know, suggest that that may be reckless on my part, but I, I, I think we are going to pay dearly for this in the future, and I'm not sure there's, and I'm not suggesting there's an easy answer to it, but I will be reluctant to vote in favor of any more increases beyond this one.
Fair enough, I just saw they're bringing up the discussion.
Okay.
Actually, could I ask you something, Mr. Mayor, because on that thought practice, so if we're looking at the same data, God forbid, but let's say we're looking at the same data on January eighth, right? Like, so does that, like in your, I, I just want to know what your thought process is there, like, does that say to you, well, we're still going to go ahead, or we're not, because?
Well, I, I'm not sure, is the data that, the numbers that Mr. Curry presented, are they relative to school-aged children? I mean, was that, were they that disturbing to you? I mean, towards, uh, uh, amounts, numbers of kids?
If you're asking me directly, I just think it's the percent positivity rate that is the disturbing thing, right? So that it's the, the rate that it's circulating in the community, because that's, you know, the kids, kids are part of households, right? Like, so I, I'm not trying to argue either way here, I'm just kind of, it, it comes back to that point of, like, how often do we change the goal line, right? Like,
Right.
And what is, and for me, like, it's always been kind of a consistent set of this, of information, and, and the piece, the third piece, other than the PPE and the social distance, and I mean, I think we have a good plan, right? I think, and I, I did ask a question in the chat before, like, when were that, when was the data for the deciding that it's basically forty percent of kids that are going back into the building? Just because I don't think personally, maybe Sally, you, I haven't, as a parent, I'm not sure I've filled that in for a long time now at this point, but maybe I missed it as a parent, but so I don't, I think, we're not going to have a lot of kids in the building, we're not going to be eating lunch, they're going to be grabbing and going. I, I think there's a lot of mitigation pieces here, and I know the superintendent has brought up Monty Tech and St. Bernard's before, that they're doing it too. I, I can't say, like, I kind of agree, and I think Aiden was alluding to it a little bit, and Rosemary's alluding to it a little bit, that like, you don't want to push it out one more time, right? Like, I don't know if after, I've been saying after Martin Luther King Day, just because that gives us that full time, but I can, regardless, I would push to at least the eleventh, right, so that we're not going to, so I would support this, I guess is what I'm saying, but I'm just curious, like, what happens if we see the same stuff on January eighth? We just do it, because it's time, so we got to get kids back in, and believe me, I have a high schooler, I know.
Yeah, I'm following Director Curry's suggestion that, that this makes sense, because it's the number of days following the holidays and whatnot, so I, I'm, you know, we, we just met this morning, we have our COVID meeting at least twice a week, so and he explained to me the why he thinks this is, this is a viable, you know, way to go. So I'm, I'm in favor, and I just, just want it made bone publicly, that I'm, I'm going to be very reluctant to do anything beyond January eleventh. I, I think we need to try it, let's try it. If, if we run into a problem where we experience a spike, so we'll, you know, we'll deal with it at that point. And if we have to go back to, you know, remote learning, then so be it, but I think we need to give it a shot.
One other question, we did receive the numbers of the students and their age. The only data that, that I would also be interested in is the severity of those cases, is there, is, Mr. Curry, is there a distinction between the younger people getting it, like, because I, I know somebody that has it and hardly knows he has it, so eleven-year-old person, as opposed to hospitalization and all of the other things that can happen? Is there any, any feedback on that score?
Yeah, I would have to take a clo- closer look at the individual fifty-two cases, I know of no hospitalizations of that age group, off the top of my head. I would even venture to say, most of these age groups are probably asymptomatic.
That'd be an interesting thing to be aware of, you know?
Yeah.
Mr. Curry, this is Jim Walsh again, of the fifty-two s- school-aged children who have tested positive, I realize that we have a very, very small number of students going to our public schools, but of those, do you know of any who are attending, you know, Monty Tech or St. Bernard's schools, who tested positive as a result of catching the virus from an in-school contact, or is most of this COVID-related because of family spreading of the, the virus?
Yeah, it's, it's mostly, there may be one or two cases from other schools, so yes, that's possible. But most of the spread is within households.
Thank you.
This is Sally, I just wanted to concur, Gene and I and Pete, you know, having close family members who are in our schools. I, I'm, I'm in agreement with the mayor, and that we are in, we have asked so much of these kids, and we're here for the kids, and for the kids to be out of school for day after, week after, month after, you know, coming up on a year, and given all the unbelievably hard work and diligence and improvements and air quality and assessments and PPE acquisition, I, I'm in agreement with, with moving forward and having January eleventh as the date. I have talked to many parents in the last week. I've also talked to Amy Jolly, who's the head of Applewild, you know, Applewild's been, been doing it, again, they don't have the class size we have, they don't have the student population we have, they have their, you know, they have their hand sand, they have all the distancing, everything built in that we have. They have had no cases, they have moved forward. And Amy Jolly, the head was, you know, she, she was really, you could, you could see, I mean, I, I just, you could see how happy she was, that there were kids in the building that were doing the learning, and that, you know, the faculty was there as well, and I, I'm very confident that we can do it, because we are going to do everything right in our schools. And if adults do not do what they should do, then at the school level, you know, we, we will, we will know. And a child who, you know, may have been exposed, you know, just, you know, will not come to school for this, for an interval. But we owe it to our kids to get them back there, the social and emotional cost is really high, it is very high, and I, I, you know, yes, we're going to have the most resilient generation ever after this. Right now, this is Silla and Karybdis, and a whole lot more. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, you know, standing, you know, standing firm on this.
I could just answer Gene's question, so some of those numbers are from August when the parent survey was sent out. However, parents have been calling schools, updating their choice throughout. There's typically a bit of a spike going in both directions when a hybrid date was about to start, although we pushed that back, so these, these are updated numbers. And it's, it's forty-seven percent hybrid and fifty-three percent remote for the district.
So just,
Can we move the question?
I'd like to ask one, one thing, please, so the,
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, so the parents still can say, if, if they want to stay home, their child may stay home, right? Yeah, okay.
Can you tend to remote learning? Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Steve has made a motion to move the question, any further discussion?
Second.
Second, I'm, second to move the question, so the motion is to accept twenty-one dash thirty-five and approve the superintendent's recommendation to continue remote learning through the dates I cited.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
And in seconded to approve. Ms. Greenleys, would you read a roll call vote on this, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor Dean Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
We are unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Greenleys.
You're welcome.
I don't believe there's any need for executive session, Superintendent.
Yep.
Correct? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. By acclamation, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
You are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, once again, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Same to you, Steve.
Safe and healthy.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Yes.
Stay safe.
Okay.
Thank you.